I'm out of practice. Good morning, everybody. I'll call to order our planning committee and special board meeting of November 13th, 2025. Terry, if we could have roll call, please.
Good morning. Director Diana Mayer.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
And Vice Chair Ranji Kus.
Here.
Currently not present are Directors Matt Sampson and Chair Larry Russell.
Thanks, Terry. We'll move on to the agenda. The first item is approval of the meeting minutes from our last planning committee meeting and special meeting of the Board of Directors that was held on October 28th, 2025.
Really quickly, adoption of the agenda first. We skipped that.
I'm really out of practice.
No worries.
Okay, so the first step is adoption of our agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Terry. Roll call, please.
Director Mayer.
Aye.
Director Smith.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Kush.
Aye. Next item, public comments on non-agenda matters.
There are none.
Okay, all right, thanks. So now we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes from October 28th. Any comments on the meeting minutes?
No.
Terry, any public comments on the last meeting minutes?
There are none.
Then could we have a motion, please, to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Terry.
Director Mayer.
Aye.
Director Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kush.
Aye. First item on the regular agenda is our Fireflow Improvement Program focusing on the Sleepy Hollow Pipeline Replacement Project. Welcome, Zach.
Thank you. Good morning, Directors. My name is Zach Talbott. I'm the Engineering Manager of the Design Section, and today we have Brian Cook, Assistant Engineer.
Welcome, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, Directors. Brian Cook, Assistant Design Engineer. I'm here to present the Sleepy Hollow Pipeline Replacement Project. This project is in support of the District's Fireflow Improvement Program and is located in the unincorporated community of Sleepy Hollow in the County of Marin. This project will install approximately 4,250 feet of 12, 8- and 6-inch welded steel pipe, along with all appurtenances, to replace the old, undersized, fireflow-deficient pipe installed as early as 1932. The engineer's estimate for this project is $1,850,000. The project is scheduled to last 185 days with an estimated completion date of June 19th, 2026. The district will review and open bids for this project on December 4th, 2025. If bid documents are acceptable, staff will make a recommendation at a future regularly-scheduled board meeting for contract award. Staff recommends the planning committee review and comment on the Sleepy Hollow Pipeline Replacement Project.
Great, thanks. Board comments, discussion?
All good, super supportive. Thank you.
Yeah, no comments, thank you.
Yeah. Now, it's obviously important work. Just because it's part of the Fireflow Program, this is funded out of the Fireflow revenues that we receive. Just want to confirm that?
Yes, that is correct.
That is correct. And but this still, do we include this? I know we have a target for number of miles of pipeline replacement that we're trying to achieve every year. Does this Fireflow-related project, is that part of the target, or is it in addition?
Yeah, when we talk about our total targets in the year or in the two-year budget cycle, it's both our capital project pipeline jobs as well as the Fireflow combined.
So it combines both of those. Okay. And I think the last thing is, it looks like it's a little less than a mile in total of replacement, and the costs are, I think you said the anticipated, the estimated budget is about two and a half?
Sorry, the engineer's estimate is $1,850,000, so just shy of $2 million.
Just shy, okay. So I think the number that I'd been using was about $1 million a mile now for pipeline replacement. So it looks like it's gone up from there.
That is correct.
Okay, so just important to keep in mind, the increasing expenses. Great. We'll give Larry a minute to get settled, but open it up for public comment in the meantime.
There are none.
Thanks, Terry. Welcome, Larry. We were just reviewing the Fireflow Pipeline Replacement Project for the Sleepy Hollow. Any comments, thoughts?
No.
Okay, then I think we're good, good with that.
Thank you, Directors.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the North Marin Line Stabilization Project Update.
Good morning, Directors. My name's Alicia Irish. I am the Engineering Manager in Planning. I'm here with Carly Blanchard, our Environmental Planner, and we're here today to give you an update on the North Marin Line Stabilization Project. Good morning, Directors.
First test.
Okay, the North Marin Line Stabilization Project, yes. I've done it before, and it usually works.
Terry has the touch.
Yeah. The North Marin Line Stabilization Project looks to replace two raw conveyance pipeline crossings currently crossing San Geronimo Creek with Soul. It's the Soul Transmission Line, moving water from Kent into Nacascio Reservoir and into, finally into the San Geronimo Treatment Plant. It was originally identified as a Fireflow project for seismic reliability, and it's critical to moving raw water in our system. The original pipeline crosses crosses twice along San Geronimo Creek, and it's supported by concrete trussels. The original project replacement looked to replace both crossings with two steel truss bridges supported outside the creek channel, and went through an initial study mitigated negative declaration, which was adopted by the Board in 2016. Since then, the project has been revised to move one of the crossings approximately 1,700 linear feet into Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, and replace the second crossing with the steel truss bridge footed outside the creek channel. The project also looks to relocate and replace a 68-year-old shafter valve and regulates flow from Kent to Nacascio Reservoir. Do these changes?
This is the one that they put across with the pipe, right? It's just supported by the pipe.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, it's a free-spanning crossing. Since these revisions, we've had to go through another SEQA analysis. So we created a supplemental initial study mitigated negative declaration, which is currently open for public review. It opened October 17th and was supposed to close November 17th, but we received a request from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to extend it by an additional week. So now it will close November 26. To date, we've received no comments, and staff is planning to bring back the revised project and the initial study in December for adoption.
Thanks a lot, Carly. Board questions? Jed, do you want to start?
Thank you.
No questions.
Larry?
Oh, cool.
Carly, you said one thing that I actually wasn't aware of. So water from Kent Lake, is it actually moved to Nacascio Reservoir before going to the treatment plant?
No, the North Marin Line is the raw water transmission line that starts at Nacascio Reservoir and travels east towards San Geronimo, and then the outflow from Kent meets at the Shafter Bridge or the Ink Wells area where the shafter valve is, and then it goes further east towards the San Geronimo Treatment Plant.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
And the part that we're talking about is between the confluence and the treatment plant.
Right, right. And this, it looks like this project has been considered since 2016.
That's correct, yeah.
Why 10 years to move it forward?
Well, I believe when the project was originally approved and the original ISMD was adopted, there was some considerations that staff needed to continue to investigate. And since then, I would say various other priorities like COVID or the drought have, you know, taken resources and put them elsewhere. So we're kind of refreshing this project, taking a good look at it. We've elected to change the original project a bit to underground some of the pipeline, eliminating a creek crossing. So looking at it, you know, from a risk-based perspective, this is a really great project and addresses, you know, two single points of failure in our system, which I think will make this particular pipeline a lot more resilient.
Yeah, I mean, it seems critical if it is the only pipeline coming from both of those reservoirs.
It is critical.
So it's, yeah, I mean, I guess I understand that we couldn't do, we can't do everything, but it seems important that we're finally moving this one forward. I've never seen it included in our CIP budget estimates and things.
It's been in the Fireflow Program. It's an identified project in the Fireflow Program, so it is in that project set. I would say that due to the, you know, various complexities of the project, it's not the run-of-the-mill pipeline project or tank recoding, that we wanted to make sure that we got our environmental review taken care of and all of our permitting kind of underway before it got officially placed into the capital program. Nonetheless, when this project is ready to go, there will be funding for it. Other Fireflow projects will get reprioritized to ensure that this can get constructed.
Great, okay, thanks. Any, we're not, this isn't an action item now, it's just?
No, we'll be coming back next month for action.
So that's republic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I got that, Larry. Public comments, please, Terry?
Yes, Phil Sauter.
Good morning. I was at a community meeting a few nights ago when this project was discussed, and they actually showed pictures of the pipeline. I don't see any here today, but it's kind of a giant, and one of the comments was it's sort of an eyesore. And I think you will be getting some comments from at least one group in the valley before the time is over. I also went to a meeting of the Lagunitas Technical Advisory Committee last week, and I think I learned that that 36-inch pipeline should not go under the creek. I think that might have been looked at as an alternative, but it would be damaging to do that. So then I hark back to Directors Russell's comment at a board meeting last week about a pump station which could perhaps be made more attractive, and I started to wonder if there's a way that this 36-inch span could also be made a little bit more attractive. It basically is a large prominent display, and I wondered if maybe it could tell a story, for example, about the creek going under it, or the path that the water takes to get through that pipe, and maybe even involve members of the community, like the Lagunitas School, for example, could say, here's what, a nice story that would appear on that pipe. Anyway, and another alternative would maybe be a suggestion box to get community input. I know Alicia is a well-regarded member of the community and perhaps could be a contact for that kind of input. So early days to think about that, but I just wanted to put that out there, that it could turn from a lemon into some lemonade, I think.
There are no further, there are no further speakers.
Great. Thanks, Phil. Interesting suggestions. Larry, now that you're settled, I'm going to hand the mic over to you.
I'm not quite done, though. You obviously looked at undergrounding this one.
That's correct.
Is there a reason we're not doing that? Because it's pretty god-awful right now, as well. I don't know about the future one, but I know the current one is not very pretty.
Well, we are undergrounding one of the sections. The other section, and we're doing that in part because the access to that site is a lot different than it was 10 years ago. There's trees and buildings, and it's just in an area that would be very difficult to access, whereas the other area is a lot more open. So it's much easier to construct, and we did look at undergrounding that part and taking it all the way up Sir Francis Drake from the bottom of Kent Lake to the town of Lagunitas. That would, that would be a large, a much larger impact to the community during construction. It's a very tight corridor in that area, particularly in the eastern section that we're going to replace the creek crossing at. And I believe to do that, it would, it would be close to a mile of pipe just to do that one area, as opposed to the section that we're just replacing in kind right now. So we talked about pipeline costs in the previous presentation, and it's actually running about $3 million miles, or $3 million per mile of pipe replaced. So just looking at the cost benefit of that and the feasibility of doing that, we elected to underground part and replace them.
Yeah, I can't imagine it bringing, bringing it under Sir Francis Drake in that, in that section. It's so narrow there, and it would, you'd basically shut, you know, shut the road down for that period.
But what's that got to do with the creek crossing? I mean, you can do the creek crossing regardless of what you do with the downstream part of the pipe.
So I think I misunderstood your question, because I was thinking of undergrounding in the ground.
No, no, I'm talking about the crossing.
In the creek, that was looked at in the 2016 project, and it was, I would have to revisit the analysis at that time. If you remember Voitek, he was the engineer for that project. It was, it was just not cost-effective, I want to say.
Well, it's probably never cost-effective.
Right, and so, and then the maintenance, the future maintenance, if you had to access the pipe in any way, it's under a very prominent creek, we, you know, to just disturb it as least as possible. This way, for the project that we're doing now, we'll actually be removing the existing pilings, removing any kind of obstruction to the creek itself, whereas right now there's those unsupported pillars in the creek, which could be a risk in a large storm.
Okay. A picture would be nice in the future of both the old and the proposed, just to give a better feel for what it looks like. But, okay, I don't know if that answered your question, Phil, or not.
It does, thank you.
Yeah. You know, it's always going to be more expensive to go under than over. So basically what we're doing is giving it a strong back, in essence, with the bridge.
Yeah.
Good. And it's good you're getting the columns out of the creek. That's a good one, especially where it is. Okay, thank you. Okay, North Marin Line Stabilization Project Update. No?
Next one.
Sorry. Water-efficient landscape.
Yeah.
I didn't recognize it by that name.
Previously. Definitely not prepared to help you with the stabilization understanding, so we could make something up that might be fun. But we're here to talk about water efficiency this morning. Paul Selye, Water Resources Director, and joined with Carrie Pollard, our Water Efficiency Manager. And we've got some sort of, usually we have really entertaining and meaty stuff for you to think about in terms of water efficiency, but today it's just a little bit of business and cleanup for us. So as Carrie gets her presentation together to walk us through three distinct items today.
I'm really excited about it, Paul. I think it's, we're in the weeds of water efficiency here today.
Also, on behalf of legal, this is the juicy stuff for us, ordinances, drafting MOUs, so.
Yes, Jared has his hands all over this one. It was great. So we're going to be discussing the water-efficient landscape code changes and our local jurisdiction MOU. So we're going to start with how we plan on making the state's model water-efficient landscape ordinance, often referred to as MWELO, how we're going to incorporate that into the district's code per state requirements. Then we'll talk about incorporating the state's non-functional turf regulations into the district code, lots of, lots of code stuff today, and then our collaboration with the local jurisdiction on our landscape plan review process.
Did you say Las Vergenes MDLO? What did you say?
It's all. MWELO.
MWELO.
M W E L O.
But Las Vergenes was in the front of it?
Uh, no.
No? I just misheard that.
I apparently can't enunciate today, my apologies. All right, so starting with landscape plan review, code updates to align with MWELO. So the state develops minimum standards for new and remodeled landscapes, and they do this in coordination with a work, working group which is made up of land use planners, water utilities, landscape architects, designers, et cetera. And so, once the states adopted, you know, what they think the rules are and need to be, it's up to the local jurisdictions to enforce and adopt this code into their own requirements and regulations. You can, of course, adopt things that are more restriction, restrictive, and, you know, than what the state's saying, but there's, they have this minimum standard that we have to meet. We have been implementing this MWELO since 1993, when it was originally adopted on behalf of the local jurisdictions, and so this is kind of carrying that forward, and that definitely aligns with the MOU we'll discuss in a moment. So there's been a handful of updates over the years since 1993. Most of them have been quote-unquote kind of as needed, you know, there's a drought or some, you know, significant change that the state wants to make to these landscapes. However, moving forward, we can anticipate an update every three year, because, every three years, because the state has incorporated MWELO into the green building code. And so we know there's going to be kind of extensive updates, maybe not detailed, but constant kind of changes throughout this code moving forward. So let's talk about what this 2024 MWELO amendment includes. It's really, it's really minor changes. Jared loved going through that red line in detail because what they did is changed definitions, like refined definitions, and moved entire sections. So it looked like it was, you know, significant changes, but really they just were deleting and relocating sections, because when landscapers are looking at this, they need to comply with it. It was really confusing the way they had it laid out. And so this was really just non-substantive cleanup. However, for us, we're looking at this moving forward, that we want to ensure that the district's code always aligns with the state regulations as they make future updates. And so the recommendation for this update is to incorporate the MWELO into our code as reference. So instead of copying and pasting 25 pages, we're just going to say, you need to comply with the state's code, here it is, with a link. However, over the years, we've added a number of more restrictive and kind of really progressive requirements that we want to retain. Those are important. So in addition to this, you know, referencing the state, we say, you have to do that, but you also have to do these five or six things that we feel are really important, that we've adopted in the past. So we're not bringing anything new forward, we're just carrying forward the changes we had made in the past, and that we've already incorporated into code. So this needs to be done by January 1, 2026, and there's a draft ordinance in your packet which details these changes, the handful of items that we're going to bring forward, like our new single-family turf limits, non-functional turf requirements for no new development, et cetera. So that's the MWELO piece. I'm going to now move on to the non-functional turf regulations. We're here looking at MWELO, and we're thinking, well, what other regulations has the state adopted that we should just be looking at now as kind of the entire package, which is why we're bringing this non-functional turf regulation before you today, or in your future, for discussion today. So the state passed this law that will prohibit the use of potable water for existing non-functional turf. You may recall, we have a ordinance in place that states that new non-functional turf won't be allowed within the district, but this is to address existing non-functional turf. And they have a schedule outlined for these non-residential properties starting in 2027, and the regulation states that the local jurisdictions need to adopt these regulations as written by the state by 2027. We're bringing it today because while that's a year out, and we're not suggesting changing the state timing, we want to get it codified so that we can have meaningful conversations with folks who will be impacted by this non-functional turf regulation, and really drive them towards our rebate programs, you know, before the regulation starts. So this won't change anything to do with our established, new non-functional turf prohibition that's already been in place. This kind of builds on what the state's requiring us to do as well. And then finally, our collaboration with the local jurisdictions on landscape plan review and other district codes, to be honest. So what this is, is a negotiated MOU with our local jurisdictions. It's really codifies and, you know, makes it very clear, our collaboration with landscape plan review and district code. So who's doing what, when, how, what's the sign-off, all of this. So like I said, we've been doing these, these plan reviews for the local jurisdictions since 1993, but it wasn't until 2021 that we already put something in place that said, you know, this is how we're actually going to work together. And it's been, it's been great. We've been able to be incorporated into their sign-offs in more a meaningful way, where we can actually log into the systems they use for plan review, which is great. We had never had that in the past. We have materials that we've developed around water service requirements for new constructions, renovations, and ADUs that are now on their counter. So it's just, it's been really meaningful. It's really been helpful, and they want to see it continue, and we do too. It expires, current MOU expires at the end of the year. This new one will go for another five years. We could make it longer, but the thought was, well, five years ago, we didn't realize we would have significant changes. And so it's just great to kind of come back and remind them, remind us how, you know, we're working together and what else we could be considering as we move forward. And so.
Would it make sense to put auto-renew into it? In other words, rather than sunsetting it, just have it, if it doesn't change?
Yeah, I think to Carrie's point, kind of the benefit that I've seen in this, because I worked on the original MOU, is right, and brought it to the board, and we could have a conversation about what was included in the MOU. And then also, it requires each town or city to take it to their council and have that conversation. So kind of re-highlights the issue, instead of it just sleeping and auto-renewing. So that's the benefit that I see.
I agree, I agree.
Do they all use the same system?
No, of course not.
So you have different access points?
Yeah, and some are still paper-based, some are only online, some are all electronic. Yeah, it's a lot of variability between the, amongst the 11 planning agencies.
Yeah, well, there's a pretty widespread in the sophistication of the individuals.
So we're proposing, as I mentioned, another five years. So this would bring it out to 2030. So wrapping up, as I mentioned, we have a draft ordinance as part of your packet. It's number 470. It provides the details on how we're incorporating MWELO into the district code via reference. It discusses the items we're carrying forward as well, making sure that we don't, we're not adding anything new there. We just wanted to bring forward the prior, you know, code adoptions for water-efficient landscapes, and then also the NFT requirement is being incorporated as a water waste regulation. And we felt like that was the best spot for it to fit within the code. And then lastly, when we come back in early December, we'll be looking for authorization to execute the MOU with the local jurisdictions, and many of them have already moving forward on it. So it's exciting to see that there's, they're excited to make sure that it stays in place moving forward. So happy to take any questions.
No, thanks for following up, and this is really important work, and appreciated.
Yeah. Thoughts? Thank you.
Yeah, just, my thanks as well. Carrie, just, I just want to make sure I follow the process. So the state has had MWELO in place since 1993, and then they, amendments occur, and then we can, you know, then we bring those amendments so that, into our ordinances, so that we're in compliance with the state updates to MWELO. In some cases, we have our own requirements that can also, that can exceed the specifications in MWELO. So just the, the main amendment that we are now bringing in, following, I guess this was, it happened at the state level this year in 2025?
It actually happened two years ago. They gave us everyone a few years to, to, you know, get the regulations adopted.
Okay, and the main change is prohibitions on irrigation of non-functional turf?
No, the main change this year is shuffling of sections. There's not, it's not a significant change. The main change for us is that we're no longer just copying and pasting what the state, you know, had given us. We're just, have a paragraph that references the state document. So it looks like we're deleting many, many pages of code, but really what we're just doing is referencing the state requirements over here, just because it makes it so much cleaner for us.
Those are two very distinct, right? The MWELO and non-functional turf.
They are.
Two very distinct requirements and kind of programs within our water efficiency. Driven by the state, but with us having on both of those added more restrictive requirements to push conservation further than the minimum state requirements.
So the ordinance combines both the updates to MWELO as well as our, our regulations for non-functional turf, or this?
The ordinance does incorporate both. That was Jared's recommendation to have them both into one ordinance.
Yeah, so kind of the beauty, I'll say beauty of what we tried to do here within the ordinance is basically we incorporated by reference the MWELO requirements, and we also said, as amended from time to time, so say next year, instead of coming back to refresh the MWELO requirements in the ordinance and type them out, like Carrie was saying, in 20 pages, because that's how long the state ordinance probably is, it would just automatically update. And we also started using a new codifier for our code online. And the advantage to that is now you can hyperlink. So what we would do is just hyperlink to the new state ordinance once it's adopted each time that there's a change, and then through the MOU process, we would notify the local jurisdictions of those changes. So without updating the code, bringing an ordinance to the board, all that stuff can kind of happen behind the scenes. And then basically for the district's more restrictive items that we have in here that are also adopted, if the board have the desire to change those, staff would bring those changes to the board. If the board have the desire to change those, staff would bring those changes to the board and then we would just update those. So, you know, presumably less changes, because like Carrie's saying, this is constantly updated at the state level. So that's the benefit that we tried to do on the MWLO stuff. But that only applies to the new developments or, you know, substantial remodel. And then the nonfunctional turf stuff at the state level, we did the same thing. We incorporated that water code by reference. Because we're presuming that there could be some amendments and changes. Because there was a concern in the legislation at the state level that, right, a local government may not have funding for this available. So we could see those timelines shifting potentially. So by adopting the statute as amended from time to time, we would just once again link. So if the state changes that in the future, we're not revising our code, if that makes sense.
Okay, all right. So so this is, with respect to the MWLO part of this discussion, it seems like this is real, we're really incorporating addressing some efficiency improvements, not very substantial changes to our management of nonfunctional, of 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 water efficiency. Okay, and then just that MWLO, these requirements are only applied to new developments that.
New developments and significant remodels.
And significant remodels.
Yeah, so there's a threshold, a square footage threshold for those different parameters.
Okay, and then and then the renewal of the MOUs, that's a, that's an independent thing, item that you're also.
Related, but separate.
Related, okay, all right. I'm not even gonna start all my questions about the changes that we made to our ordinances for turf requirement, turf for new developments, new residential developments and substantial remodels. I know that's another topic that we've been spending time on, but that is independent of this, just just reminding myself.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else.
This seems a little unusual. Are there any other ones that are like this with MOUs and all that kind of stuff?
The state allows it and they actually, as part of not this amendment, but the amendment prior, I believe it was twenty fifteen. It always, they always put the owners on the Land Use Planning Agency. But a number of water utilities like us and others across the state took on responsibility because it meant we're the ones that cared about, right? Compliance and making sure landscapes were water efficient. And so the state actually added that language to say, it could be a water utility, it could be local jurisdiction, they just need to decide and figure it out amongst themselves.
But like the gray water stuff and the other water efficiencies aren't under this kind of format, are they?
The gray water compliance was under the prior MOU, yes, and it's been removed because it's no longer a requirement. But we incorporated things like backflow prevention, cross connection, recycled water.
So the MOU is broader than just this.
It is. It's primarily landscape plan review.
Okay, it's everything we do.
It's a number of things that we do. It's things that we want customers, when they walk in and they're filing a permit, we want to make sure that there's no surprises. They want, we want them to know upfront, which is why we have that handout at the counter that kind of outlines all of these different requirements as well.
Now I understand.
Wonderful.
Great. Public comment?
Yes, Phil Sauter, please.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm glad that we're going to follow the state's lead on reducing the use of potable water on nonfunctional turf. I think it will help bring us into the age of recycled water for nonfunctional turf. And eventually, hopefully, to greater use of recycled water for large residential turf as well. I don't think there's much debate about the need to reduce the district's reliance on potable water for landscaping. But rather about the speed at which that reduction takes place. It seems the state is on a mission to speed that process up. And perhaps can be the bad guy in moving our heaviest users of outdoor potable water toward a less wasteful future. Yesterday, I came across some numbers on a ten year summary of water sales by category. Showing dollar sales for potable water, recycled water and raw water. I wasn't surprised to see treated water sales drop substantially after the recent drought. Nor surprised by the major increase as the twenty twenty four rate increases kicked in. What was surprising was the fact that dollar sales of recycled water also dropped after the drought and they haven't recovered. Dollar sales for recycled water were less in twenty twenty four than they were six years earlier in twenty eighteen. That's certainly not the direction the state's going in, and I'm hopeful that the planning committee will decide to dig into the numbers. And find out exactly what's contributing to our low and getting lower use of recycled water. I think that analysis would be even more productive if it were done concurrent with the deeper dive into our industrial, commercial and institutional customers. This was requested at the July twenty second meeting of the planning committee, and this seems like a good time to actually schedule it. Those users are twenty five percent of our water sales and Peacock Gap may not be the only candidate for conversion from potable water to recycled water. It would be good if Marin were not only to be in sync with the statewide objectives, but perhaps as as suggested, even surpass them. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay, with that, we'll move on. The next meeting is December eleventh at nine thirty. I will be in Santiago, Chile on the eleventh, but I will participate. I just will need you to coordinate the meeting, if you would be willing to do that.
Of course.
Great. And with that, we'll adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.